Good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and fellow citizens. Welcome to the April 5th, excuse me, work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Certainly good to see you all this afternoon. We're going to go ahead and start walking through our work session for you today. And I know we've had, in the past couple of meetings, we've had a few Chesapeake Bay exceptions. And we promised to come forward and give the Planning Commission a bit of a briefing on how that process all works and what the regulations are. So, we're going to start off this afternoon with a presentation from Stacy Porter, and she will go over our Chesapeake Bay exception process.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Well, okay, you know me, but I'll just go ahead for the camera. I'm Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I'll provide you all a brief overview of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance. And we'll have some time at the end for questions. All right, let's see if it works today. Don't tell me it's not working. If you can give me just one second. Let's see what's going on. It's working? Is it not, something not working with? Okay, great, okay. I'm going to go ahead and give you an overview of what we're going to be talking about in the presentation today. Okay, are you able to do it? Okay. It does work, thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much, Meg. All right, first, I'll give you a history of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance, which is City Code Section 9.1. Then I'll be talking about the three different types of Chesapeake Bay preservation areas, our resource management area, our resource protection area, as well as our intensely developed area. And then I'll focus in on our resource protection area. We'll talk about what's exempt, what's allowable, what's permitted, and what requires an exception. We are part of a group of 84 localities that have a Chesapeake Bay ordinance. Most of those localities are located east of Interstate 95, as you can see in this slide. Back in the year 1988, the state of Virginia passed legislation known as our Chesapeake Bay Act. Localities that bordered the Chesapeake Bay followed suit and adopted a local Chesapeake Bay ordinance. Our ordinance was adopted in 1989. The official enactment date is October 1st, 1989, and you may have heard me say that date in some of my previous presentations. The purpose of this legislation was to ensure that water quality considerations would be a part of land use planning at the local level. The objective was to minimize pollutants reaching the Chesapeake Bay while the population grew and development increased. All right? As part of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance adoption, a locality was required to also adopt a Chesapeake Bay preservation area map. Portsmouth map is shown here. Chesapeake Bay preservation areas encompass approximately 9,300 acres of our city. City staff uses a digital version of this map here within a mapping system we know as pictometry. It provides us a general understanding if a property is located within one of our Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. I'll now provide an overview of each of the Chesapeake Bay area preservation types. We first have our resource management area. Think of it as a buffer of protection for our resource protection area, of which we'll discuss later in the presentation. Development in resource management areas generally is, development is generally permitted in resource management areas, but held to a higher standard to ensure that a proposed land use will not diminish the functional value of our resource protection area. And you all are probably most familiar with our resource protection area, specifically its 100-foot buffer, but I'll provide an explanation of its entirety. The RPA, which is denoted by the bold red line, as you can see in the slide, is an area of land adjacent to a variety of natural water bodies, streams, creek beds, and state waters, and that's what's indicated here on this slide. The RPA is composed of tidal wetlands, and I'll just circle that, your adjacent non-tidal wetlands, and that 100-foot buffer of land, which of course has got that blue line here. Here, I've depicted the two portions of the 100-foot buffer. First, we have our 50-foot C-word buffer, and we have that 50-foot landward buffer, so it has those two portions. Now, the depiction of the 100-foot buffer here is very ideal, and I'll just circle that. We are depicting a very ideal buffer. You don't probably see a lot of those in Portsmouth because most of our land is developed. And this ideal buffer is composed of canopy trees, understory trees, shrubbery, and ground cover. And this all provides several benefits, including filtering stormwater and our runoff, controlling erosion and flooding, and also providing wildlife habitat. Our Chesapeake Bay ordinance seeks to preserve the 100-foot buffer's existing vegetation to the greatest extent practicable, and to enhance areas where vegetation has been removed or never existed. The third type of Chesapeake Bay preservation area is an overlay of both the RPA and the RMA, and this area is known as the Intensely Developed Area, or IDA. This is an area where little of the natural environment remains, as shown in the photos. In Portsmouth, that includes areas such as our commercial and industrial working waterfronts and our downtown waterfront area. These areas consist, consisted, excuse me, existed prior to the adoption of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance and contain more than 50% impervious cover, and where there is little opportunity for establishing a vegetated buffer. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance regulations acknowledge that IDAs play a significant part in the locality's economic development growth. Therefore, there is reduced regulatory oversight for developing these areas. We're going to focus now on the resource protection area, specifically talking about what's exempt, what's allowable, what's permitted, and what requires an exception. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance exempts certain forms of development and land disturbance such as public utilities, railroads, public roads, water wells, passive recreational facilities such as boardwalks, as you can see here in the slide, and access paths, as well as historic preservation and archaeological activities. These exemptions require adherence to certain development requirements. Exemptions are solely reviewed by city staff and would not require your review. The ordinance provides a category entitled allowable land uses. These uses would include water-dependent facilities such as what is shown here, a residential pier. Another example of a water-dependent use is a marina. However, only the water-dependent portions of the marina, such as the piers and associated boat slips, would be considered allowable. Any non-water-dependent components would need to be located outside of that resource protection area. Other allowable land uses include non-public roads and driveway crossings, flood control or stormwater facilities, and development or redevelopment in our intensely developed area. Allowable land uses are again reviewed by city staff and would not require your review. And permitted. What's considered permitted in our resource protection area? First, staff will need to ask themselves, when was the lot platted? And we actually have three different plat date categories. First, we have our lots that were platted prior to the inception of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance, so the pre-October 1st, 1989 lots. Also, we have the lots that we consider the tweener lots. They're platted between October 1st, 1989, so after we had the inception of our ordinance, and before March 1st, 2002, and then lots platted after March 1st, 2002. And I'd like to provide just a quick explanation of our tweener lots. What does that mean? The state of Virginia established this tweener lot category in response to previously allowing localities to provide a 50-foot reduced RPA buffer accompanied by a stormwater management facility when creating our waterfront subdivisions during the earlier years of our Chesapeake Bay program. March 1st, 2002 became the effective date for providing that full 100-foot buffer. And so therefore, we have that tweener lot category. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance provides, makes provision for development within the RPA's 100-foot buffer for your pre-October 1st, 1989 lots and your tweener lots only. The ordinance is clear that a principal structure and necessary utilities are permitted as long as the development does not encroach into that C-word 50-foot buffer. The principal structure could be a single-family home or commercial building, as shown in this slide. Staff will administratively review requests that are permitted in our RPA. And we're going to now discuss your role, and that's in our exception category. Every locality with a Chesapeake Bay ordinance has a code provision for requests that are not considered exempt, allowable, or permitted within our resource protection area. Development requests that do not fall under the aforementioned categories must receive a formal Chesapeake Bay exception. Here in Portsmouth, our Planning Commission is the review body for such requests. Other localities may use a Chesapeake Bay board. An example of an exception request is a shed within the resource protection area, as shown in this slide. There are five criteria listed in Portsmouth City Code Section 9.1-12 that Planning Commission must use to evaluate an exception request. Let's examine each one in light of the request for a shed. The exception criteria number one, the exception is the minimum necessary to afford relief. You all will need to ask yourselves, is the request reasonable? Can the shed be located outside of the RPA? Does the size, type, and placement of the shed minimize encroachment in the RPA? All right, we've got. Exception criteria number two, granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant's special privileges denied by others within the overlay district. You'll need to ask yourselves, is the request consistent with the surrounding area? Do nearby houses have sheds? If not, were they denied a similar exception request? Is there a precedent for granting an exception for sheds like this? For example, have you approved sheds in the RPA within the vicinity of this property that were smaller in size? Criteria number three, the exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. You'll need to ask yourselves, did the applicant submit a complete water quality impact assessment? What was staff's evaluation of the WQIA and recommendation? Staff will typically provide their review and their recommendation on your behalf. Criteria number four, the exception request is not based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Are there particular physical characteristics of the property that create a unique situation, such as the property's shape, or perhaps the floodplain encroaches onto the property in a unique manner? Will the proposed development location need to avoid existing tree canopy? Is the property owner facing unique challenges that necessitate a shed? And finally, your last one. Criteria number five, reasonable and appropriate conditions are imposed to prevent the exception request from causing a degradation in water quality. To assist Planning Commission, staff will typically provide or recommend appropriate conditions that keep the proposal from causing a degradation in water quality. Other considerations that might be evaluated include, has the homeowner been granted other Chesapeake Bay exception requests? Are there any outstanding violations or area of noncompliance with the city for this property? Planning Commission will always receive staff's evaluation of each aforementioned exception criterion and be provided a suggested staff recommendation to assist you in your deliberations. Please note, we will continue to provide a recommendation of denial for violation matters and allow the commission to make an appropriate final determination of approval or denial. And that does complete the presentation, but of course, I welcome questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Ms. Porter?
Hi, thank you. That was very informative. I did learn a lot from that. I did have, I guess, one comment or observation. For the exemption for number two, you said that, would it cause a precedent in the area? And would staff, I know that you have told us before, will you always, how far do you go back to see if it's a precedent? How, how do you, you know, remember if there's a precedent that was set?
Very good point. Actually, when I did this presentation, I thought about the fact that we used to keep a database of all of our Chesapeake Bay exceptions. And after a while, I think when we stopped having a lot of requests, we stopped adding to that database, but probably need to reestablish that again because that'll help us to understand, okay, in the vicinity, this is, these are the exception requests that you all have reviewed, approved. I would love to do that again, but yeah, good point.
Because I guess with, with the members of the board changing, Planning Commission changing so often, what one group of individuals may think is a precedent may not, you know, were a violation or something that could be approved, recommended for approval.
Perfect, perfect, yes. I agree with you.
And one other question. You mentioned that what Planning Commission is allowed to vote on and comes before the commission, does the city of Portsmouth have a wetlands board?
We do.
Okay.
We do, yes.
Okay. I didn't know if that was something that was dropped now that these come to the Planning Commission. So what, what does the board vote on?
Sure. They're going to just have a jurisdiction in the intertidal zone only, so they would not rule on anything in the upland area. You all are, and I'll go back to that beginning slide, just to make sure you know where the wetlands board jurisdiction really is.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, so, wetlands board, we got our, our tidal wetlands, that's your intertidal zone. So, your riprap, your bulkheads, there are some other projects that might fall into that, a boat ramp, but yeah, you all are in the upland area, so you're actually behind, if there's any non-tidal wetlands, they're not always there. But if there are any non-tidal wetlands, you all are going to just work in this upland area, this 100-foot buffer. That's, that's all you guys are going to do. The wetlands board will take care of the other part.
From everything, okay. So, the, the swimming pools, the sheds, things like that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
One, one question and then a request. The request is, is can we have a copy of that?
Oh, yeah.
I think that would be the awesome.
Absolutely.
And two, kind of bouncing off of what Ms. Thaxton said, so you might have commissioners that may not have experience reading drawings?
Yes.
Is it possible that we can come up with that elevation or that bird's eye view?
Okay.
That's more...
Kind of like...
3D, yeah. That is a little more, a little more clear. Is that something that we require?
Like, something like this?
Absolutely.
And you really could see C-word buffer, landward buffer?
I think that would help.
Okay.
Because it's kind of hard sometimes to make the delineation on a drawing where the structure that's being built...
Sure.
...actually is in retrospect to the RPA, even though we, I can read the lines.
I understand.
Not everybody might have that, that skillset.
Sure, that makes sense. That makes sense, okay. That's fine.
Any additional questions, commissioners? One last thing, you say we used to keep a database. Do you still have that old database?
I'd have to look for it. I don't know where it was saved. I'm sure it's still saved on our network somewhere.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you.
Okay.
We'll let, we'll let Stacy come back over there so she can come back up. I will, I will mention one thing just on your prior, on that prior presentation. Keep in mind, you do look at these as, on a case-by-case basis, each piece of property is to be looked at independently, but you do want to look at whether or not you're setting some standard that becomes, and I'll just go back about eight or nine years ago. When I, when I came to the city in 2013, the staff was recommending denial of all of them, and the Planning Commission was denying every request, and we had at least five lawsuits pending, because that's not really the way the, the law was intended. The law was not intended to just blanket say no. And so we try to give you a, what I think is a fair reading of what the intent is of the state code, and then let the Planning Commission make the decision you seem appro, you seem to think is appropriate. So, it's a, it's a Planning Commission final decision, and that's, you know, doesn't go beyond the Planning Commission. If someone appeals your decision, it's going to go to circuit court, not city council. So, make sure you're aware of that. You are the final say on these exceptions. Okay, so we'll move to our first item. We have two, actually, Chesapeake Bay exceptions on your agenda for today, timely as this is. So Stacy will come up and do CBE 22-01.
All right, I'll just go ahead and read the slide here. Good afternoon again, Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. This is case CBE 2201, Mimosa Cove. Rodney Flores of Pinnacle Group Engineering Incorporated, on behalf of William S. Dodson, Jr., requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for an attached garage and associated best management practices at 801 Mimosa Road. Okay. All right. The property is Zone Urban Residential GR, and is approximately 2.96 acres in size. The property contains a one-story, 2,056-square-foot, single-family dwelling constructed in 1961 with no garage. The property contains a detached garage that is a bit of a distance from the front door of a single-family home. The lot was platted prior to October 1st, 1989, and approximately 50% of the property is encompassed by that resource protection area. The surrounding area is the Mimosa Cove neighborhood, primarily characterized by single-family development to the east, west, and south. The western branch of the Elizabeth River is located to the north. This is the submitted site plan that provides several proposed site improvements, which include a retaining wall, and I highlighted that in that blue line there. There's fill-in gray that is proposed in the rear property, and it might be hard to see, but it's this little blue, walkway to the pier, and the attached garage, which highlighted, all those in shades of blue. And there are three best management practices that are proposed to satisfy the stormwater management requirements. This proposal requires site plan review, and today you would only be reviewing just the attached garage. And I wanted to zoom in on that garage that's proposed. The garage is proposed to be 792 square feet and would be a two-car garage attached to the eastern wall of the single-family home. And really, only a small portion of the garage, and I'm going to go ahead and highlight that, only a small portion, about 10%, will encroach into that C-word resource protection area buffer. So I had the green circle up there to show you just that little corner. The garage is positioned to not extend past the front face of the home, which is required by the zoning ordinance. To minimize land disturbance, the majority of the garage will be developed on top of an existing gravel driveway. The home's HVAC system, and I'll circle that there, is within the area of the proposed garage and will be relocated elsewhere on the parcel. All right. And the proposed by retention basins for the development have been located within the landward 50 feet of the resource protection area buffer and will be further evaluated by engineering staff during the site plan review. Staff estimates that the proposed 792 square feet of attached garage will encroach minimally, about 10%, into that 50-foot C-word RPA buffer. Majority of the garage will be developed on top of an existing gravel driveway. With a minimized C-word buffer encroachment and minimal land disturbance outside the garage's structural footprint, staff recommends the approval of the exception request with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or any questions for Ms. Porter? There appear to be none, thank you.
All right. All right, and I'm going to go on to our next one. Okay. Okay. All right, again, good afternoon, Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. I'll be reviewing CBE 2202 Pinehurst, Nathan Leahy, PLA of Orbis Landscape Architecture, on behalf of Joseph Moses, requested Chesapeake Bay exception for a detached garage and to expand an existing driveway at 4,400 Seegrove Road. The property is Zone General Residential GR, and is approximately 0.83 acres in size. The property contains a two-story, 3,301-square-foot, single-family dwelling constructed in 1950 with no garage. The property has an asphalt driveway with a carport on its surface. The property was platted prior to October 1st, 1989, and approximately 50% of the property is located in that resource protection area. The property is surrounded by the Pinehurst neighborhood, primarily characterized by single-family residential development to the east, west, and south, and the western branch of the Elizabeth River is located to the north. The applicant presented a site plan, which is shown here, that shows the existing site conditions, and highlighted in dark gray the existing structures in the landward 50 feet of the resource protection area buffer, which includes a shed, a concrete pad, and the existing asphalt driveway. In the next slide, I will focus in on the exception request. According to the submitted proposal, the existing asphalt driveway is aged and in disrepair. The challenges that the applicant faced was they needed to avoid a 12-inch drainage pipe, and that is actually located here in this, it's the dotted, it's the black dotted line here. Okay? As well as provide minimized driveway expansion within that resource protection area. The proposal achieves both. The top of the asphalt will be removed, the subgrade base layer would remain, the driveway would then be resurfaced with concrete, and basically, the work is going to be performed in place. They needed to add these two, and it's highlighted in red, these two wings, these eastern and western wings, so as to provide an appropriate backing and turning radius for a vehicle. The additional driveway expansion, and I'll just go ahead and head and show that, and hopefully you saw that blue circle come up, that additional driveway expansion is really to the south, and it's going to be outside of the resource protection area. The new carport and garage combination would be built on top of that surface. The proposed driveway refurbishment and expansion involves the removal of the existing asphalt, followed by a concrete resurfacing. The proposal required a minimal 663 square feet of driveway addition impervious cover in the RPA to create the appropriate turning radius for ingress egress to and from the proposed carport garage, of which will be fully located on the driveway surface. Staff finds that the proposal has minimized land disturbance and is the minimum necessary to afford relief. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of the exception request with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. That concludes that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Porter?
So, they will be removing the carport and replacing it with a new one?
Correct, yes.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'll go into our final of our work session presentations. This is use permit 22-06. This is Senior Planner Amy Mervine will be presenting this one, filling in for Julie Chop, who is not with us today.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This is Amy Mervine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth Planning Department. So, I will be going over UP 22-06 in West Craddock. Mr. Singh requests a use permit for a retail sales establishment at 3923 Deep Creek Boulevard on the 2516 Greenwood Drive parcel, located in the Urban Residential UR zoning district. This use permit application involves the property at 3923 Deep Creek Boulevard on the 2516 Greenwood Drive parcel. The approximately 0.197-acre property is within the Urban Residential UR zoning district and is located at the intersection of Greenwood Drive and Deep Creek Boulevard. The property contains an existing vacant one-story frame, approximately 1,440-square-foot masonry building and a one-story, 685-square-foot metal frame building. The applicant indicated in the project narrative that the property was previously used as a community butcher shop and more recently, as a religious institution. A two-family residential development that is zoned UR is located directly east of 3923 Deep Creek Boulevard. Residential, single-family properties zoned UR are located across Deep Creek Boulevard to the west of the subject property. To the south, across Greenwood Drive, is a religious institution that is also zoned UR. Single-family dwellings and the Lincoln Memorial Cemetery, zoned UR, are located to the north of the subject property. The applicant plans to redevelop the existing masonry building into a community convenience store called Ding Wing 2. The metal frame building will remain and be used for storage. The applicant plans to sell candies, sodas, juices, chips, and ready-to-eat items. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, or Monday through Saturday, from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. On Sunday, the establishment is proposed to operate 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The hours of operation have been included as a recommended condition of this use approval, use permit approval. The applicant approximates hiring five to seven employees to staff the convenience store with a maximum of two employees working each shift. The applicant plans to paint and remodel the exterior of the existing masonry building. No details were provided regarding the proposed remodeling plans. The conceptual site plan depicts one-way vehicular entry to the site from Greenwood Drive and one-way vehicular exit on Deep Creek Boulevard. The plan shows four 45-degree off-street parking spaces along the north facade of the main building. Parking is depicted along the property line adjacent to the Deep Creek Boulevard. The dumpster is proposed to be located in the northeast corner of the site and will be screened in accordance with zoning ordinance requirements. On January 26, 2022, the applicant received a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow an opaque six-foot fence as an alternative to the required 10-foot perimeter vehicular use area landscaping strip. The fence will be located along the rear perimeter. I'm sorry, I missed a sentence. 10-foot perimeter vehicular use landscaping strip. The fence will be located along the rear property line and along the side property line to the north and east of the site. The fence will end 10 feet from the front property line along Deep Creek Boulevard to ensure proper site triangle visibility. Much of the existing asphalt along Greenwood Drive and Deep Creek Boulevard will be removed and replaced with vegetation. As part of the city's ongoing safety and crime reduction efforts, planning staff has included a recommended condition of this use permit approval to require that security cameras be installed on the property to provide recorded surveillance of all exteriors of the establishment. Please note that this proposed condition is expected to be used more frequently in the future use permit applications. Staff recommends approval of the use permit request with the recommended conditions for a convenience store retail sales establishment at 3923 Deep Creek Boulevard on the 2516 Greenwood Drive parcel. With the recommended conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate in this location. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. This concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. As I recall, this is your first presentation before us.
That's correct.
Well done.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Mervine? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just note, Commissioners, that condition we were just talking about there has been used in the City of Newport News for a number of years. And a number of localities within Hampton Roads are also looking at language similar to that as we're all attempting to deal with the similar problems we're having across the country as well as in Hampton Roads. So, this will be the first of many you will see, I presume. And that's all we have for the work session today. I have no additional items to bring before you at the present time.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions or concerns that you need to bring up? If there are none, the work session, we've concluded the work session, and we will come back at one-third for the regular session of the planning commission. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, April 5th, 2022, being held in the City Council Chamber. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Present.
Commissioner Curry?
Present.
Commissioner Hines. Six members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the March 1st, 2022 meeting, the chair is in need of a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Chairman, I second that motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 planning commission. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by a public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their April 24th, 2022 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first public hearing item, CBE-22-01 Mimosa Cove. Rodney Flores of Pinnacle Group Engineering, Inc., on behalf of William S. Dodson Jr. requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for an attached garage and associated best management practices at 801 Mimosa Road. The property is zoned Urban Residential UR and is further described as Tax Map 637, Parcel 6.1. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends high-density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Thank you. I'm Rodney Flores. I'm the agent for the applicant. Good afternoon, Chairman Williams and other planning commission members. I'm here in representing Bill and Yvonne Dodson, who live at 801 Mimosa Drive. We're here for a Chesapeake Bay exception for an attached garage on a single-family home and some best management practices. A portion of the garage, plus or minus 50 square feet, as you can see from the diagram up there, is in the C-word, 50-foot RPA. So, upon review of our application, I'm sure you noticed that we do have an existing garage. The new garage will be handicapped accessible. Mrs. Dodson has significant medical issues currently, and we expect that to continue to deteriorate with age. And so, the purpose of this attached garage is to provide an ADA-accessible building for her to use. As far as the sighting of the garage, the garage is attached, as you can see, and we sighted it where it is because of where the existing home is. So, the homes out in this neighborhood were built in the 1960s. And as you can see from the site survey, the great majority of this entire lot is in the RPA. So, same thing goes for the sighting of the BMPs. We're sighting buyer retention mulch bed BMPs. And so, we have to put those downstream of existing impervious areas. And of course, all of those impervious areas are within the RPA, albeit that they're in the landward RPA. So, we're adding these BMPs to treat the existing runoff, where right now, it just flows directly to the creek. As I mentioned, the property was platted prior to the Chesapeake Bay Act, October 1st, 1989. We have a very small portion of this garage, about 50 square feet, that's going to be in the C-word RPA. And we feel that we meet the six criteria needed for you guys to approve an exception. Number one, we're not getting any certain special privileges. Well, this is a single-family neighborhood, so almost every home in a single-family neighborhood is going to have an attached or detached garage that they can use. Number two, this is not self-imposed. As I mentioned, the lot was platted, you know, a couple decades before Chesapeake Bay Act. The house was built in the 1960s. So, certainly, it's not a self-imposed condition. Number three, it's the minimum necessary to afford relief. This is a 27-by-29-foot attached garage, and we got the minimum area from the site architect as far as having accessible distances around cars and so on within the garage itself. So, we feel it's the minimum necessary for a two-car ADA garage. Number four, that it's in harmony with the intent of the Chesapeake Bay Act. And certainly, we're putting BMPs in, we're putting landscaping in, and we're trying to treat the water quality where right now, nothing is being treated. Number five, reasonable conditions are being put in place. And so, we're doing some of them ourselves, landscaping and the BMPs. We understand staff has some stipulations. We do agree with the staff's stipulations. And number six is that other conditions that the commission may see fit. And we would welcome hearing any additional information you may have. Staff recommended approval of this exception, your professional planning staff. And we would ask that you do the same. And I'll be standing by for any questions as well. The property owner is also present for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Before you leave, Mr. Flores, Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Flores?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Flores.
Hi.
You mentioned that the garage is going to remain a garage. There's no plans for any living conditions in the garage?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-22-01. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If there isn't any, the chair is in need of a motion for CBE-22-01 with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of CBE-22-01 with condition.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, motion and second to approve CBE-22-01 with conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions. Our next item, CBE-22-02 Pinehurst. Nathan Leahy, PLA of Orbis Landscape Architecture, on behalf of Joseph Moses, requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for a detached garage and carport to expand an existing driveway at 4,400 Seegrove Road. The property is zoned General Residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 763, Parcel 12. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends low-to-medium-density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator, Stacy Porter. The applicant or representative is at the podium. You may state your name, and you may begin.
My name is Nathan Leahy with Orbis Landscape Architecture, 400 Granby Street, Norfolk, Virginia. We're here today to present, very briefly, as Ms. Porter has already covered in the informal session, very thoroughly, our application. The homeowner has an existing carport. It's been there for a long term. It's expanded its life. It's time to be removed. Carport doesn't really provide the security and the storage that you would typically associate with a garage. So, they would like to come back and replace a portion of it with garage, another portion of it with the carport. We made this concession to kind of reduce our impacts on the buffer as far as with enclosed structures. The carports opened. There was a restriction associated with that, which we worked with Stacy to get through that. This request also has a small driveway expansion. This will be mostly for access and in and out, ingress egress to the existing facility. Overall impacts to the buffer are minor. Minor encroachments beyond what's existing and already there. We won't be encroaching any further towards the water, the feature line, than what is already there. This is definitely the minimal that we can do to get the relief that we're needing on this project. And we've been through the report. We agree with all the conditions, and we'll be enhancing the property with buffer restoration in addition to the minimum that's required. The homeowners have offered to exceed that. So, I'm here for questions, if you have any. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Lay? Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-22-02. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, are there any further discussions? There being none, the chair's in need of a motion and a second for CBE-22-02 with conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CBE-22-02 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0 with conditions. Our next item, UP-22-06 West Crata. Mr. Singh requests a use permit for a retail sales establishment at 3926 Deep Creek Boulevard on the 2516 Greenwood Drive parcel located in the urban residential UR zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for the institutional public development. The property is owned by Singh and Majetta LLC and Kumar Haring, and is further described as Tax Map 467, Parcel 3.1 and Parcel 3. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
My name is Robert Kellum with the firm of Kellum-Gerwitz. I'm the engineer for this project. This existing structure has had a, I don't know how long, but interesting experience here. It started out as a butcher shop, was later turned into a meeting place for a church, and we're looking, again, to seek a permit to turn it back into a convenience store. The conditions that have been read to this board are acceptable to my client. The hours of operation were provided by my client. We've also sought the approval from the BZA board, and those conditions that they have imposed will be shown on the site plan if the conditional use is permitted. I'm more here to answer questions concerning this application than to present it. The concept plan will be adhered to. The outside of the building will be renovated and, let's say, updated to be in keeping with the community around it. But should the board have any questions concerning this application, the owner and I are here to answer those questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Kellum?
Yes, I have one. Does the applicant have any intent on applying for an ABC license?
I anticipate, I'm going to yield, do you intend on doing any type of alcohol later? Okay, that would be a separate application to the state, I believe, to this board.
Okay.
Am I not correct that it has to appear before you again?
No, that's not us.
Oh, it does not? Okay. I knew it had to go to the state. I've done that before.
I played it full.
Yeah, right.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Kellum?
Yes, I have a question. I wanted to find out exactly how they'd be able to minimize or prevent any crime or transaction in that particular?
Well, you know, that is an interesting item here. We have been asked by the conditions imposed on this application to have a surveillance camera facing the roadways internally. We have been asked by the BZA to place a fence surrounding this facility, totally opaque. It would not have any gates or anything else. We are stopping this 10 feet before the travelway to each road. As far as abatement to possible random acts, you know, that's kind of, unfortunately, out of most of our hands. Is there anything you would like to add? You can come up here because they're going to have a, this is the owner, I'm sorry.
Hello, everyone. What was the question again?
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Kaljit Singh.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, my major concern is that, I know you really cannot control the violence, but what would you do to ensure that there is no one, like, hanging around the store or inciting any transnational violence from your establishment?
There will be two employees always working at the property, and we'll put a security guard also from 7:00 PM till evening closing time till 11:00 PM.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Kellum or Mr. Singh? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellum. We have no additional questions. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-06. I do have two registered speakers. The first speaker is Jason Hora. You would come forward. You have up to five minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you, commissioners. My name's Jason Hora. I'm actually a resident at the adjacent property at 4,000 Deep Creek Boulevard. I currently have lived there about 16 years and have seen the church establishments come in and out of that particular area. I do have some concerns with the retail establishment being erected or put into this particular area due to the fact that this is a very high-traffic area as it stands already, to which the road of Greenwood going east to west does have a very unique intersection to which the, some of the cars that are going through that do not allow for good visibility. Plus, there's a lot of speeding that happens through those particular areas, both directions, on Greenwood and on Deep Creek, sometimes upwards of 50 miles an hour with no stopping in place, and also avoiding the camera light or the stoplights that are there. Also with that, you know, my concern is the cutting through the parking lot. I did see some of the plans, as I walked in earlier on the Planning Commission side of it, with the parking being at a 45-degree angle, one entrance in, one entrance out. However, when you still look at the traffic flow becoming from Deep Creek or any of those other particular areas, there's nothing stopping individuals from running those lights, causing an accident, and also those people or customers backing out, being hit. Over the past 16 years while I've been there, I've actually testified at three different cases involving an accident at that intersection, to which it was either a person not being able to see, speeding, or pulling out in front of the individual in that particular area. Some of the other concerns I do have are the peddlers with other businesses and convenience stores in the area. I frequently actually go to these places as well. There are numerous peddlers, people begging for money, things of the sort, to which that happens throughout all hours of the night. Doesn't matter the time of day or the actual people that are on board. I understand the applicant does want to put a security guard in place, however, that is minimal as far as an impact to this if they don't actually enforce what they're going to be doing outside of that particular building. The same goes with loitering. There's a lot of loitering that happens outside these buildings currently after hours. For instance, like the 7-Eleven down the road on Elliott and Greenwood, loitering happens there. A lot of theft occurs from that particular area, to which, you know, there were cars stolen from that particular site within the past few years. The same thing happens at the Dollar General located at Portsmouth Boulevard and Frederick, the one that was just erected. Numerous times you go there, you can't even get out of the car without somebody asking you for money, coming up on you for whatever reason, and then also theft from the place that we've actually seen occur while we were in the actual store itself. My other concern is that of unauthorized parking within the areas. A lot of times when people come through those particular areas, and if there is a convenience store, we're looking at parking across the street, then obstructing traffic from those particular areas, and also parking on other people's property, such as my neighbors across the street, and then also impacting the neighbors next to them. I did hear that there was a fence that would be erected, but again, regardless of the fence or the provisions that are with this application, I believe that that's just going to be minimal impact to actually take this, these things into consideration. Also, the environmental impact with this particular area, as it stands now, we currently have a lot of trash that is just littered into our yards by people just stopping at the lights. They do not care about the property, do not care about the area, and things of the sort. And so, I anticipate that there would be more trash based off this facility being established across the street, not to mention an increase in pests or rodents due to the fact there's a larger amount of trash from boxes and possibly other food items and things of the sort. My other concern was actually addressed by Commissioner Page with regards to the ABC license. If anything comes to the fact of an ABC license being given, now we increase the risk of DUIs in that area, people buying alcohol after hours or into the evening hours.
Excuse me, Mr. Hora, you have one minute.
Yes, sir. And causing more accidents. Lastly, is the noise. As it stands now, there is no real noise ordinance in place to really combat the noise that's going around in that particular area. So, I do see that there would be an increase in noise with that, and do have some concerns with the whole thing. I do appreciate the time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker is April Bibbins, or James. Good afternoon.
My name is James Bibbins. I live across the street from a gentleman just left. We would put it much everything he said. My concern is the traffic, and sometimes it's rough getting out of my own yard at this present time already. If you add more traffic in there, you know, there are certain times you almost got to walk out in the road and stop somebody just so you can come out. So, I am concerned as he is as far as the traffic or the crime area and stuff of that nature. When I moved there, I wasn't expecting a store or a retail store to be across the street. It was a church at the time. I can handle that, and adjusting to everything that's going on. But if I have anything to say, I would, I don't think it's a great idea myself for it to be in this area at this time. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on UP-22-06. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and you would like to address this application, you may step forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Sir?
May I address one of the safety concerns that we've brought up by?
Sure. Wait.
One, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, good evening. I was just coming up here to also express my concerns with that particular building being there. My husband always stated, already stated, and also my neighbor, my concern also is with that convenience store supposedly being there, less than a quarter of a mile, there's a 7-Eleven, and across from that, there's another convenience store. Then you have Dollar General and a BP. If I go down the street the next way, there's also Valero and Farm Fresh and a 7-Eleven. There's already, to me, enough convenience stores already in that area, and it doesn't need to be another one to further traffic and congestion. Also, with the school being there at certain times of the day, that traffic backs up, and me being at the end of that driveway, that street light is right there in front of my house, it's traffic, a lot of traffic, speeding and all kinds of things. I just don't understand the concept of someone wanting to put a convenience store right here when I can walk each direction, less than a quarter of a mile or half a mile, and there's already, convenience stores already there, already, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, did you want to add something at the end of the speaker?
No, no.
Sir, did you want to add something?
I would like?
Because what we're not going to do is, we're not going to turn this into a debate.
No, no. I'm just, there were several things that make this a unique site. One is the offset of the intersection right there. I don't know whether you can go back to the previous slide. I'm trying to make it a debate. One of the bad things here is that it is paved all the way to the travelway. We will be removing that pavement so it no longer looks like an extension of the travelway, which a lot of times in rainy evenings where you lose sight of where the travelway is, it looks like there's a building in the middle of my lane. We're going to be landscaping that and breaking that up. Also, there was a question about rodents. We voluntarily reduced the size of our dumpster to a four-cubic yard. It will be dumped twice as often as an eight-cubic yard. As far as the community people loitering, we agree that we will have cameras on the outside, and I feel like it's better for this community and all communities to have an occupied building where people are good stewards to the community than to have a vacant building. And that's, like I say, I apologize if that's not the way this?
Oh, no, that's fine.
reacts, but usually, the applicant's given time to address items that may have come up in the citizens' remarks.
Right. But again, we're not turning this into a debate. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-06. If there is anyone else here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, the chair's in need of a motion for UP-22-06 with conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve UP-22-06 with conditions.
Is there a second?
I think our motion failed.
If there is no second, the motion fails.
I would like to make a motion to deny the use permit. Let me get the number. Thank you. UP-22-06.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny UP-22-06. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion to deny UP-22-06. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is denied by a vote of four, five to one.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business we need to discuss today? Mr. Baldwin, do you have anything further?
No, sir, do not.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.